I feel like I'm being judged by you.
It's the other way around.
Hello, Mr. Johnson. How are you? Merry Christmas. Daryl's in the background.
Oh, yeah.
Matt's here.
Oh, good, sure. Susie, I'm recording now. I'm recording now.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't want you to say something.
Yeah, my face like this.
I didn't want you to say something.
Please, sorry.
Big basketball game tonight. It was that last night?
Last week.
Oh, it was Tuesday ago?
Well, that was last week.
What happened? So the margin wasn't as big as the after you game, so that's good. It's awesome.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Here it goes.
There we go. Can you hear me now? Wish I got paid for that. He changed companies, didn't he? Thanks for coming this evening. It's a work session for the Board of Education, North Canton City Schools. We're just a little bit past 5:00 on December 20. The reason for this work session is to discuss district finances and steps to move forward. And what we're going to do, we have some folks here, since our November 7 levy defeat, we ask a group of folks to meet, call them the Independent Financial Advisory Committee, some folks to come in and review our financial status, some of our data, and to make a recommendation to the board of things to consider in the coming months. So what we're going to do tonight is talk about a few things. I'll discuss a little bit of what we talked about, the data we gave the committee, ask them to make any comments that you like about any of that, our five-year forecast, our history, our staffing trends, any of the information you got, that you received, a lot of information. We'll talk about what we requested you to do and what we were asking for the back, give back from that group, and also finally what the group's recommendations were. Not everybody can be here tonight. On that committee, Dave Kokenauer, Steve Gregory, Larry Hoover, Dave Johnson, Sr., Tiffany Kennard-Patton, Jeff Peters, Daryl Revolt, Matt Stroyer, Cassie Tucker, and Matt Tucker, and also Scott Wardburton, served on that team with us. The four of us helped facilitate that, from answering questions, giving information, myself, Todd Tolson, the Treasurer, Dave Pallotti, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Certified Personnel, and also Todd Hemmey, our Director of Operations and Classified Personnel. So with that, I'd like to have just an open conversation. We gave our committee lots of information, a financial history going back, detailed expenditures and revenues going back to 1997, and some interesting information in there. For the board members, this is available. Most of the information we gave to this group is in our finance book that Todd puts together just in September, in the fall, early fall, and lots of information to review. We looked at the financial history, our current five-year forecast. And once again, remind folks that school districts' treasurers are the only ones in Ohio required to do a five-year forecast. Cities are not, other state departments are not, but school treasurers are required to do a five-year forecast, even though more, little less than half of our funding comes from the state of Ohio. They only do a two-year budget or a biennial budget. And it's interesting that school districts are required to do that, and Mr. Tolson does a great job with that in forecasting where we will be in the future. We also included a ballot history of all the levies that we've had on and passed and not passed since the mid-'60s, I believe, is where our history goes back to. Staffing history, how many employees we've had in every different sector in our district, going back to 2004, and also current financial needs. We talked a lot at a couple of these sessions about exactly what we need to survive, what we need to be solvent, and what we're looking for to be able to operate for five to, five-plus years. So those are the things that we gave our folks to look at. Those are all public records. They're all available to anybody that would like to look at them. And most of them are on the website, actually, to see. Does any of the committee interested in commenting on any of those or any particular ah-hahs or findings at that point?
How much ah-hahs do you want?
Well, we appreciate your work and we appreciate your input. So anything that you would like to add for the boards?
Well, if you want an open comment from one member, I appreciate all the information that you provided us. It was extensive, looking back for the last five years and looking forward. And it didn't take a rocket scientist to understand that we've got a real challenge in front of us. And fortunately for North Canton, we're a community of many voices, but one common goal, and that's to provide good things for our community. And as a committee member, I appreciate the opportunity to come forth with my support, not only for the group you put together, because you had people on both sides of the issue there, which was commendable, but also for the suggestions that I think were forthcoming, that we have to do something about it, and we'll all try to go about it unified. And so with that, without getting into specific numbers and others, I am here to support your efforts, and I hope that the board will certainly go along unanimously, because a community should be unanimous, not only from the board's standpoint, but from the community's support, and I think you're on the right track.
Appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Johnson or any of the other members? We should have the folks stand up. Mr. Daryl Revolt is here. Hi, Daryl. You wave and stand up. Mr. Dave Johnson, Sr., just spoke to you. Matt Stroyer is here. Cassie Tucker is here. Anybody else from the committee sitting there? If I see anybody else come in, I'll make sure and point them out. So if anybody else has anything to say, please, please share. This is a conversation, not so much a lecture or presentation. So we requested, the board and the administration requested several give backs from this committee, knowing that they had a lot of information and some knowledge at the table to explain some things and answer some questions about school finance and our current situation. We asked them to give us a consensus recommendation for what to put on the ballot, how much to put on the ballot, how long it would last, and also whether it included a facility project or not, because our last one did. And there was much discussion about, around that. Most of our discussion was around, once we settled on, how much do we need? And we talked about how long it should last. We talked about five years or more. We talked about asking for something less. And the committee pretty much said that it needs to be, we don't want to be back on the ballot in less than five years. That we need to make it last at least five years. And not so much, nobody voiced their opinion that it should be less and more frequent. So a three-mil levy every three years or something less that our folks in our community would probably prefer a levy that would last five years or better. And that was a consensus item as well. So we had a lot of discussion about what the group felt would pass. Looked at our levy history. We talked about the amount that we needed. We talked about how long it should last. We talked about what mechanism to use. And those were the questions that we had. Is anybody interested in any comments around that that we discussed? I can tell you there was some discussion around unearned income tax. And it was pretty clear by the committee that that is not something that the committee was going to move forward at this time. And that spoke a little bit at the, it spoke a lot, quite truthfully, at the November ballot. So the interesting piece, those that know it and liked it did, and those that know it and didn't like it, didn't like it. And so it was a little bit polarizing at the ballot. And I think that we talked about why the last levy failed slightly, a little bit in that committee meeting. And it was, I think the committee said it was the amount, the total amount, and the mechanism, which was unearned income tax. It wasn't our district and our community's not ready for an unearned income tax. So those were the two primary reasons for the levy to not be supported by our community. Any comments about those things that we just talked about? Daryl?
I think, great summary. I think one of the, one of the points that I would add for the record is that we did provide a profile of income taxpayers in the city of North Canton. We don't have data for non-municipal residents, but we're able to calculate or able to identify, in a macro sense, income levels, what percentage of taxpayers fell into those income levels, and also where people paid taxes, which we thought was important to understand, particularly in the face of the defeat. To understand how many of our residents may pay income taxes in communities of 2% or more. So we thought that was helpful, and hopefully that will guide the conversation.
Yeah, we appreciate that information that we don't have at, in our entity, but the city did, so we appreciate that.
I have a comment.
Sure.
I would appreciate it if anyone here is willing, who is not on the independent committee, if you were, if you're willing to share any of your thoughts on why the levy did not pass, other than what we already know, being the earned income, or things that you think were done that hurt us as far as the levy goes, things that could help us, depending on, it doesn't even matter what it ends up being, the levy, but things that could help us this next time around to be able to pass it. I would really appreciate comments from anybody that's here, if you're willing. Sorry, I don't have my mic on. Yes?
In, you know, the learning about levies and stuff, when I was on, it seemed like a lot of the focus was around the capital building construction. But when I looked into it just for my personal expenses, you know, I realized after talking to Todd that the vast majority of my tax liability was really for operating expenses. And it seemed like a lot of that focus was geared in disseminating information really primarily about the capital part of it and not really explaining the need for additional operating revenue. So I honestly think there's probably a lot of people that didn't necessarily realize that there's actually a need for additional operating revenue. That was just kind of my take.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I personally used to feel that it was communicated enough about how much we do need the money, just for operating as well. Just because I think a lot of people, there were confusion. People were trying to figure out the numbers for themselves and whatever, and it wasn't... I don't know that people knew where to go to look for the information, even though I know we put it out there, but I don't know that it was put out there enough, I guess. But a lot of people came up with their own scenarios, and I think there was a lot of confusing information, a lot of contradictory information. So I think that kind of hurt as well.
Thank you.
I'll come up to the front here so I can get on the microphone. My impression is that the public felt it was a little underhanded to have one vote or two expenses. I guess it would work definitely. I think it would be better if we had two different ballot issues. Number one, these are our needs for, I don't know what it's for, operating or whatever, property taxes for, as I understand it, operating revenue. And this is what we have to have to keep the schools open. And then you could define a building plan and say, this is what we like to do, and have a second vote for the earned income tax. And as I said, when several months back, 1% is a little hefty. Maybe you could scale back your building plans and have maybe a half a percent. But I think the public felt we were underhanded, a single vote. And they waved up and said, oh, my God, I didn't know I voted for this. I thought I was voting for this. So it should have been defined, this is our operating needs to keep the school running, keep top quality teachers and all that that goes with it. And then say, we would also like to do this. This is our building plan, and let's get it back. So people felt like we were trying to swoop something by them, by lumping them together. I don't, I support them. But unfortunately, I don't think there was enough information campaign. We really need people going door-to-door to squelch some of the misinformation that was flying around. I don't know how you want to focus on that, I think, months before. There needs to be a door-to-door campaign, focus on the outspoken people who you see on Facebook or whatever, who were leading the misinformation or the hysteria, or whatever you want to call it. Anyway, it should have been two separate choices. I can live with this, maybe not this. And then you wouldn't find yourself back here, trying to just keep your head up a little bit now. But now you need operating revenue. Is that the right terminology, Mr. Tolson? Property taxes is for just operating schools?
To operate the schools, you could either generate them through a property tax or an earned income tax. They both were for operating.
Okay, okay. Anyway, it should have been two choices.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You know, the campaign, we don't want to spend tonight on campaign strategy so much, but we do appreciate the input, because we are trying to answer the question of, you know, what will our community accept? And so we appreciate the input into, you know, what didn't the community like, without getting into details about the campaign strategy and so on. And we did go to houses, went to about 2,000 homes, I believe, and knocked on doors. But, you know, we, the words that, the two major pieces that we've received information back on mostly are the amount. Had it been just a millage, a property tax, it would have been about 13 mils. We talked about that, and I'll share that in a minute, at our finance committee. And, and part of it was an income tax. So those were the two pieces, I think, that sunk us most and that folks didn't care for to vote yes. So, but appreciate your comments. And those things, you know, describing the need, both first two comments were necessarily describing our need for the operational piece and clearly, I can't even say clearly, very clearly, but clearly, and describing our needs from an operational point of view. So, thank you. One of the things that I just alluded to is, we did discuss at our committee meeting what the group felt our community would support. We looked at our levy history. There was one back in 1969, I believe. I'm not sure what happened then financially. I believe the state changed their funding mechanism. But there's a 16-mil levy that passed in 1969. I'm not sure what that was about. That would certainly not fly today. It is still earning $19.69. We did look at our history. We have failed a 7-mil, 7.5, I believe. We failed in the mid-2000s, and then we did pass a 6-mil, 6-plus something following that. So the committee was, it was very clear in their recommendation that whatever we do should be less than 7 mils. And when we get into the review of what, what the committee recommends, and it was a consensus meeting. What we mean by consensus was, is that maybe everybody or nobody got everything they wanted, but when they left the room, they could live with the summary. So that's how we determined consensus, was everybody was good with the direction we're taking to send this to the board. So that was the first recommendation, was 7 mils, less than 7 mils, that they felt our community would tolerate and support 7 mils. It will still be a, an ask, a big ask, and a tough campaign. I mean, whenever you ask for any money, it's a tough campaign, and that we understand that. We also shared financially, with the data of where we're at financially and the need. So in the next campaign, I'm sure that the need for whatever millage we settle on will be crystal clear and will be shared appropriately. You know, the fact that we cut 1.5 million two years ago, or a year and a half ago, wasn't heard for some reason. And so that needs to be heard, and $300,000 that we've reduced this year so far has not been heard. So we need to make sure and clarify that moving forward of where we're at financially, what happens if we pass, what happens if we fail at our next levy issue. The committee did recommend a property tax, not an earned income or not an income tax, that anything that moves forward from the board to consider, their suggestion would be a property tax and a continuing property tax. All of our taxes are continuing. There was a major piece in the campaign against that it was a forever tax. All of our property taxes are forever. They're continuing. So, you know, that was one thing we talked about. It was kind of funny, because we asked, we talked about property tax and not income, and the question was raised, well, how long? And it was very clear, well, continuing, of course. So it's a continuing recommendation. And, and not to include the building project at this time, that to do so would be too big of an ask. Learned our lesson in November. That's a tough thing. So we also shared with the committee, if we need X number of dollars to operate for the next five years, if we don't do a facility project, we need X more to help maintain our facilities during that time if we don't build new, or until we decide to do that. There was not a recommendation from the committee of when to address our buildings. That's for another committee or another board, or this board, to consider of when we do that. Maybe it's a year, maybe it's two, maybe it's three, maybe it's more. I don't know. But that, the committee did not work to that answer or that recommendation to address our facilities, except to say that at some point in the future, the district should consider addressing facilities other than just a maintenance piece. So, once again, the recommendations from the committee, and I appreciate folks talking about this, were something below 7 mils, a continuing property tax, and to not include a building project at this time. And, you know, we had a lot of discussion to get to that point. It sounds pretty simple with three items, but it was lots of discussion. Anybody, any comments or anything anybody'd like to add? And we can have questions, sure.
So the 7-mil property tax would be equal to what we would have generated with the 0.75 income tax?
No. Remember that the 0.75 income tax would have helped done, would have contributed to some of the debt on the, on the facility piece. So 3.99 mils would not have paid for all of the building debt. So some of that is going to come out of the earned income. So we shared that we needed about somewhere north of 4.5 million to operate for the next five years. And if we did not include a building levy, we would need close to a million dollars more to maintain our facilities. So that's how they arrived. And quite truthfully, it was, you know, what can we, what can we pass in the committee's opinion and still function? And that's how we arrived at the less than 7 mils. So it'll be probably 6-something, but that was the answer. So 13 mils total, so 3.99 is a bond issue, and then the 0.75 would have been about 13 mils total, 13.5 or so.
But the new would cover then operating expenses and permanent improvement funds?
Some permanent improvement funds, yes. Well, but they would still be in operating, but we're not going to do a permanent pro, permanent improvement levy. It will be one ask. It will be all operational, knowing that we're going to have to spend some general fund monies on facilities.
So just to throw some additional information in, we talked about about $4.5 million is what the need was for operating revenue. And then we said roughly another $1 million a year to be able to make sure that the roofs and the AC units and the parking lots and all the different needs to keep our buildings safe and dry and secure, since we won't have new buildings, about an additional million. So that's about 5.5 million. To get 5.5 million is about 8 mils. The committee didn't feel that we could get 8 mils. So they felt 7 mils, under 7 mils is what would be more palatable of our community. So with that, we're still not really being able to fully sustain all of our operations as well as all the building needs. There'll still be some reductions that need to have to take place to be able to sustain the district for at least five years.
And then, as well, there's no growth factor into the property tax. There was some growth factor into the earned income.
Correct. Historically, over the last 15 years, we've averaged about a half a percent increase in property, and that's typically, there's been a new development that's popped up. When the county does their triennial updates based upon valuation changes and increase to various properties. The earned income tax was going to generate, it was in the, depending if it was a 10-year history or a 20-year history, anywhere between 2.5 to 4% average increase on the income tax side. So the, the growth potential on a property tax is minimal at best. So basically, our revenue from a property tax will remain stagnant.
Todd, our expenses historically track CPI 2% to 3% every year. If, assuming there's no major change in state funding, if we go at the high end of 68, 69, where does that get us to before you have to move back on the ballot?
Our goal was five years. So we're looking, we believe that we can get to at least 2023 with this. So we're looking, we believe that we can get to at least 2023 with this ask in the high sixes. And that our goal is always to make it last longer, the last levy. We passed in 2010, was a four and a half mil. And we wanted to get five years out of that. We've gotten seven. Now, that also included a million and a half of cuts last year. It's going to include some additional cuts next year. So we're making it, but.
Your target's five.
Yes, absolutely.
And we had, there was a lot of discussion about effective millage and where we were. I think we were fourth in the county. If we pass this 6.8, 6.9, where does that then put us in the county from an effective millage standpoint?
I did not actually look and plot that out, but it would probably put us top two, I would guess, without, you know, actually going and looking at it. But I'm guessing that would put us in the top two.
Any comments from the folks on the team regarding the recommendation?
I think the information that you and your staff provided was wonderful. I mean, it was in-depth. The committee, as you know, we got inside of each and every issue. We looked at the five-year. We questioned you, but we also talked about would we have excess or would we just get by? And all the information that was provided was spot on, in my opinion. And it provided us at least some assurance that we could meet a five-year and still have a quality education that we're used to and that we need in this community for our students. So that information was in-depth. We talked about millage and effective and outside and we talked about other areas. It was a very, very extensive information. And I commend you because we spent a lot of time at it, but you provided good information.
I thought it was very thorough as well. And I think, I think we all wanted it to be more closer to seven than less, you know, more to 6.9 or higher to try to produce as much. But I think we all thought that was the simplest way for the community to look at something and look at their appraised value of their house and say, hey, I'm going to pay this amount of money over the next five years addition, additions.
We did talk about amount per month on their property value. And that's a, that chart was previously shared on the property value and on the millage piece. And that's pretty easy to get to in chart fashion to help folks understand what it will cost them on a single source of revenue. Yeah. Any other questions? I want to talk about one more topic, yes.
You mentioned that there's still going to be cuts, is that true? You still have to reduce the budget for this coming year by 2 million?
1 million if we pass, 2 million if we don't. I understand that you don't collect any tax dollars in the current year. So if we pass in May, if we're on in May, if we pass in May, we collect in 19. So we don't collect in, before January 1 of 2019. So we've got to make some cuts to survive. As folks know, our five-year forecast is very steep. There is somewhat of a balance right now, but it goes very quickly and we're in deficit spending currently. So, but yes.
One in one or one in two?
One if we pass and then we should be okay for five, six years, seven years, hopefully more. If we don't pass, we need to implement 2 million in cuts immediately and then better pass in November.
We're cutting a billion regardless of that.
Yes. Yeah, that's what I, that was a great segue because I was just about to talk about my part, which is the recommended reductions in expenditures. So, and, you know, we walked into this with really a fundamental problem. A stagnant or low revenue and increasing expenses. And your checkbook's at home, you know, as operational costs, as cost of living go up and insurance costs go up and those kinds of things and fuel and those kinds of things go up. And your revenue doesn't go up, one of those two needs to be adjusted. And to provide the programs and services that we're used to, we need to make an adjustment, either increase in revenue or reduction in expenditure or a little bit of both. So that's kind of the fundamental question that we're trying to address and will be recommended to the board to take action in January on to be on the ballot in May. We certainly plan to pass in May and the recommendation will be to the board. And the board hasn't taken action. They haven't even been asked to take action. So I don't want to, you know, talk out of turn. But the recommendation will be to, once we work our numbers, to have them address, putting something on in May to address our finances. Because we would have a second shot in November, should we not pass. But that's certainly not the plan, certainly not the plan. Yeah, I had one question in the back first.
I just want to make sure I got this straight. We needed to be comfortable 8.5 mils. You said, cost of that maybe? What, before the finance committee decided on less than seven?
Correct.
We said to stay comfortable to stay the course of what we're doing. You wanted more like 8.5? Was that, did I hear that right?
It was closer, I mean, it would be closer to eight mils.
Okay. So the seven, we're below seven, it was just because that's what this committee thought the community would support better?
Correct.
So is there, is there a plan or is that, what's going basically? If we need that to stay stagnant, stay where we are, what's the plan on that one mils difference?
I think that's. That's another great segue into my next part of, you know, how do we maintain our current programming with our current limited revenues and get to our increased revenues in January of 19? So that's what I was going to, just get ready to talk about. And the main interest is to keep those reduction areas away from classroom and teaching and learning. And so I'll talk about those areas in just a second. We have one other question, Mary?
I haven't heard any mention of the 3.995 levy that's expired.
2.5. 3.99 was the new. 2.5 comes off. So we have a mortgage for this current building and that comes off at the end of 2019. But that's a mortgage and it goes away. It's paid off. So then we'll have less expenditures at that time. But Todd also has that built in the five-year forecast as well. The yearly debt on that is?
I think that generates about, that generates about 1.8 million dollars in two and a half mils that our community pays right now. That last payment would be in December of 2019. And at that point, then in 2020, everyone's tax bill will actually decrease by two and a half mils.
But we don't then continue to get that revenue because that will drop off. That'll discontinue to be collected.
Correct.
I think that's important.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. That's why on the previous chart you saw, and a little bit confusing, this is what 3.99 costs. This is what comes off at the end of 19. This is the net cost in the future. So we will certainly share that in May. But this isn't a bond issue, so I assume we're not, we're not going to do a bond issue. And so that will be explained to, that, understand your tax bill will go down once that bond is paid off.
Jeff, I have a question. Or maybe it's a better question for somebody on the committee can answer. One of the things that I think the opposition did in the last levy very successfully is they portrayed this as a forever or permanent tax. And we all up here understood that all of our, all of our levies were continuing and permanent, as they should be because we planned to educate children forever. They were very successful and they planted those seeds. Is there any discussion of how we now walk that back because the recommendation, I see as for a continual? So we all understand the need for that, why we have to have it. But I think these seeds were planted in the community and somehow that was disingenuous. I think that was on Councilman's service.
I think that what you're missing on that part is that it was permanent on an income tax versus a property tax. And people are very sensitive toward their income versus property. It could be semantics, but that's not perception to the community.
I understand that the income tax was very popular, but it was only permanent until you retired on the income tax. The property tax is forever. So even when you retire, our folks who are on fixed income are going to have to pay this forever. It's significant. And I support the levy and I will support the levy because it's the right thing to do. People sacrificed years ago so my kids could enjoy what they did. I just think it's something, it hasn't been discussed that you all who are going to take this forward really need to think about because those seeds were planted out there in the community. And I agree with you, Matt. A large part of it had to do with the fact that it was an income tax. But, but I still think it's going to be something you're going to have to contend with, particularly for those who are on fixed income.
Agree.
I think part of, I would defer to Dave Johnson on this. I'm not convinced that there was a lot of detailed analysis out there amongst the electorate. But a lot of, there was a lot of noise circulating around, but I'm not sure at the end of the day that voters behave in sort of, even here in North Canton, in a very detailed, rational way. Something new was asked of them that they were not served about. One of the points of some of the information that we considered was that 75% of the taxpayers in North Canton earn less than $75,000 a year. It's all broken out. That's pretty staggering when you think about it. 70% of your taxpayers earn less than $75,000 a year. And so when we begin to touch income tax, they may not analyze it very clearly. It may be the right way to go, but to them it was new and different and concerning. And I think, again, voters typically, it's the bottom of the ballot. They want to wrap it up. I'm not sure. And as we, as Dave and I know, voters aren't certain. They vote no because they can redo it later. And I think we could, you know, we can kind of go back and forth, but maybe it's just process of familiarizing people with the issues of school funding and how all this stuff works. And maybe at the end of the day, the 60 days before an election isn't enough time to educate the voters. But personally, I think part of the challenge that we have is that we have in the city, an older, poorer community than we had three years ago. And that is something that we cannot ignore. We can only ask what the voter can afford. I don't know what that magic number is or how we combine it. But when 70% of your voters are making no more than $75,000 a year, we have to be cognizant of what they can carry.
So Darrell, when you, when you say 70% of the voters, you're talking about those that live in the city confines?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. What we did by, for those of you who don't, we had, we had Laura Brown, who's Director of Finance in North Canton, called RITA, which is the Regional Income Tax. We had it all broken out. I got a copy. I think Jeff's got a copy. We're happy to pass them out. But long and short of it is, 70% of the voters earn less than $75,000 a year in North Canton.
But that doesn't address all the people who live north of the city confines?
No, it is only, again, it is only in the city of North Canton. So again, it's not a complete snapshot, but it might be instructive. And again, you can put too much on it, but don't put too little on it either.
It's a little less than half of our populace. About 55% of our kids live outside the city areas. But Mr. Johnson shared his, a common term. If I don't know, I vote no.
That's right. Also, the other thing that's very interesting about your question, Bruce, is the fact that you lost the message. They grabbed the message and we just heard it. It's a forever tax. When you lose the message, and our message was lost, your message was lost. And that can't happen again. You don't want that to happen again. Because the message, your message was lost, their message took over and it was subliminal, but it was planted. And like Darrell said, when people don't know, they vote no. And that's, and North Canton is a traditional voting community. I know I've been here on the ballot at least 18 times myself. And this is a tough community. If you lose the message, and we can't do that, and we won't do that, I don't think this time.
Thank you. And we know that 14% of our voters that went through the ballot didn't even vote yes or no on issue 44. That's kind of a, that's a staggering number, actually. That's a high number. So the, I want to make sure to leave time for some reduction conversation because I know some folks are asking a couple of questions about that. Once again, for the 16, 17 school year, we reduced 1.5 million dollars. Some of that included a RIF or layoff. That's a reduction enforced, that means layoff in school terms. We lost six teaching members, six certified staff members to other districts. They found jobs, but they still got laid off at North Canton City Schools. We also had some other reduction areas and so on. And again, 80%, more than 80%, about 83 or 84% of our expenditures are in salary benefits. And we're a people organization, we're a service organization. And that's where a lot of our expenses are. So to make cuts and some things, I'm going to talk about kind of four buckets. These are our targets that we're going to reduce recommendations for next year. Again, if we pass in May or November, well, if we pass in May, we know that we have revenue coming in 2019. We can then start the school year with 1 million in reductions and get us to that point. If we don't pass in May or if we fail whatever's on the ballot, we're going to need to implement 2 million in cuts. So we'll plan for 2 million and not implement one of those if we, when we pass in May. So those are generally in four buckets. One of those is athletics. And let me preface this because some folks want us to, we've had some discussion about when to make reductions. Keep in mind, we've made 300,000 in reductions this year. We've talked about a significant reduction in professional development for this year and are looking very closely at any cost or expenditures in professional development, which quite truthfully, in my mind, Jeff, the superintendent, is the second most critical place in our district. One is at the point of instruction with teacher and student. That's what we're about. That's our vital mission. The second is training of our staff and professional development of our professionals. That's the second most important thing we do and provide. We don't want to have staff that's not well-trained, well-equipped, well-supplied to complete their mission. So to me, that's, that's a tough call. But we, it is an expenditure area that we can squeeze at this time. But we're taking heed at that and being very careful with that. We're also looking at field trips. You know, it's not a lot of money, but it is some. And some field trips that aren't necessarily necessary. So there are some things that we need to do to reduce those, any expenditures that we can. So we're looking very closely at any current expenditures. But in order to make some significant reductions, we're talking about labor contracts. Some want to cut busing right now. Well, we still have to pay drivers and we still have to pay benefits and salaries for those. So that's not, you know, something that we can do. Pay to participate and those kinds of things, I'll talk about in a minute. But mid-stream reductions for implementing reduction areas is very difficult. But we believe that if we can make a million in reductions, moving into a May successful ballot, we'll be okay to get us to 19 and then five, six, seven, maybe more years after that. But athletics to consider pay to participate of some level. We would certainly get input on how to implement that, either in athletics and/or co-curriculars. Need to talk about what it includes, how much, how family caps and all those kinds of things. That's a very detailed question with lots of moving parts that we need to get input on and to formulate a good plan. Lots of other districts in our area do pay to participate. And there's many different models everywhere from $300 per athlete and a $1,000 family cap to a $100 one-time athlete participation fee with a $300 cap. So there's all kinds of different pieces in there. We need to formulate with help and partnership from some folks in our community of what works best for us. Transportation. We believe that we can pull back on some of our stops. You know, whenever you have an expenditure reduction or an opportunity to look at your expenditures, you can pull back stops. And the word cluster stops becomes pretty popular. And then when you pass, you get calls every year and people wanting their students picked up at curbside and so on at their house. So we're making a lot of stops which cost a little bit of money, but a lot of stops cost a lot of money. And we can get to a cluster stop. We can also increase our, or decrease our transportation zone. So what that means is walking distance. But it's not really walking distance, it's parent responsibility distance. responsibility distance. There's some areas in our district that don't have sidewalks, and it's a parent's responsibility up legally, with Ohio, up to two miles. So we can legally say, if you live within two miles, we don't provide transportation. Currently, our K-5 is one mile and our middle school, high school is 1.5, with some caveats that we don't ask kids to cross Apple Grove, we don't ask elementary kids to cross Main and some areas, some other major thoroughfares that we don't do right now. So it's not a true radius of a mile or mile and a half, it's depending on traffic and safety. But we do have, there's a consideration to increase that distance for parent transportation responsibility, which could save some money, and we're thinking about $150,000 for transportation zones to parents to increase. And if we reduce high school busing and eliminate high school busing, if we do not pass in May, that's about a $300,000 reduction. We know that one bus route costs us about $41.5 a year, including mileage, maintenance, benefits and salary. So we're looking at about $300,000. We don't have to provide 9 through 12 busing. We certainly don't want to do that, but if we don't pass in May, that's certainly a possibility, and that would be another reduction to that $2 million area. Other things, the third bucket is programs and services. What, how are we going to run our classes? What's the class? Pupil teacher ratio, how big are our classes? How do we increase that and still maintain a quality education? Class sizes will go up, and some of our services may be reduced. Some of our extracurricular, I shouldn't say extracurricular, some of our courses that are not course requirements or not graduation requirements that have low enrollment may be reduced. So we're looking at every single program area, and unfortunately, that's the thing that makes us unique because we do have great programs, we do have some programs that are unique to North Canton. And unfortunately, those are the ones that sometimes get a little expensive and you get down to necessity a little bit that we need to consider. So there's some things that are coming into focus that we need to talk about as far as reduction areas in programming. So field trips I talked about, professional development, class size, programs with low enrollment, and those kind of things are in the program area. But as I mentioned, the fourth bucket is staffing, certified and classified. We've identified currently about $275,000 that we can reduce through attrition right now, today, if we don't replace those that have indicated that they're either going to retire or leave for some other reason. So, you know, we're in good shape there. So we're on our way to $1 million. We certainly don't want to do a reduction in force. We certainly want to maintain the integrity of our teaching and learning and the point of instruction. And we would hope that we can beat our number through attrition and not through a layoff. But to address that million dollar target is something that we're working diligently on. We can't implement them today or next month, but we have plans to make sure that we hit the right number and also have in the playbook or the call list, if you will, to reduce $2 million. But that's not much fun at all. When you talk about reducing high school busing, you talk about reducing staff through a RIF and those kind of things, and eliminating programs that make us unique. The fundamental question to our public with whatever lands on the ballot is what kind of school district do you want in North Canton City Schools? And that's the fundamental question, is what does our community support? What kind of programs and services will our community support? So the committee, the independent financial advisory committee's recommendation is something less than seven mils on a continuing property tax and hold on our facility project at this time. Understanding that, we didn't talk about that committee at all about cuts. We didn't spend any time talking about cuts. That's an administrative responsibility to do that. So we didn't ask for input on cuts from that committee. So that's an administrative piece that we'll present to the board and our responsibility to come within budget. It's our responsibility to operate the district within budget, and we feel appropriate budget is a million dollars less next year, even if we pass. And if we don't, it'll be $2 million, and we'd better pass in November. Otherwise, we'll continue to unfortunately dismantle the district. This is what you do to get down to, to meet the budget. So any other questions for the committee or from the committee? It's a lot more fun to talk about revenue and new programs than it is reductions and reducing expenditures. And we have a great district, we have a fantastic board and a fantastic community. Really appreciate the work of the folks on that committee that came together and looked at numbers, and it was very clear immediately that the folks on that committee, no matter what their opinion was about issue 44, are interested in doing what's best for our kids and our community. That was crystal clear. And everybody in that room was interested in what's best for our community and our kids, and let's get this squared away. And just very much appreciate the work that they did, and it's, some of them had a blast. I'm not, I can't say everybody had a blast, but some of them were, they were problem solvers, and they really got into the numbers and so on. It's like, hey, I love this problem, let's work on this and dig into the details and get this taken care of. So we appreciate your work, and we may be calling on you again, but we won't let you go too far. But we very much appreciate you and your work, so thank you.
What was the name of the committee again?
The Independent Financial Advisory Committee. Any questions from the board?
Actually, just one real quick comment, and what I, I think we, the community needs to understand, and we need to communicate very clearly, when we get to cuts, you talk about increasing the busing radius, you talk about pay to participate. Those two issues hit the same kids. The kids, my kids who can walk to school, my son who drives to school, thinking busing away is not going to impact. But we have kids, and you look at our median income, who, whose parents can't, or are going to, it's going to be a real struggle for them to get their kids to school on time. And those are the same kids who are going to be negatively impacted with pay to participate, who really need the structure of the athletic program. So I think the community needs to be involved, and we need to have an understanding of which kids in our community are going to be most negatively impacted by some of those cuts.
Absolutely true. So heaven forbid we get to a reduction in high school busing or elimination of high school busing. It's those kids that Mr. Greenwell talked about that most need to be at school, that all of a sudden don't have transportation, who then have attendance issues that leads to grade issues, that leads to problems with courts, and it's unfortunately an unattended consequence of meeting our budget that we're not serving our most needy kids. And that's very scary. And I appreciate Jordan mentioning that because that's a, when you start talking about reductions and reductions in services and programs, unfortunately, it's those things that we do that are special for kids that have a higher need than the general population that we have a tough time serving. That's what makes us special.
Jeff?
Yes?
So is it safe to assume that because we're not asking for what seems like enough, these cuts that are going will not be coming back? It seems like we're not quite asking for enough to do what we need to do.
We believe we are asking for enough to function, and there's some things that we believe that we can do financially to function appropriately with the current level of services. They're not adds, but they're current level of services. So we believe that, and I'm not sure you interpreted that 8.5 million.
Maybe a little.
Because we didn't talk about that much. We talked about the need for 4.5 that Mr. Tolson mentioned and some additional. So, and that's about what seven mils or a little less than seven mils generates, correct?
Yeah, an additional million on top of that generates 5.5 million dollars, and $700,000 per mil, that's just south of eight mils, so 7.8. So I mean, we're less than a mil off.
Right.
So it just means we have to be very responsible.
So it's not necessarily that busing will be gone forever, pay to participate will go on forever, is that, is that the plan? That's what I'm kind of confused on how we're going to cut.
I don't think any of that's set in stone at this point.
No, that's, we can't determine.
Right, I don't have it set in stone, but how we're going to cut to get to a certain spot and then still not quite have enough and bring these things back. I guess that's my question, that.
We would certainly look at what we can bring back to provide the appropriate level of services and what our community expects. And that's, those are the things that we haven't determined yet, we can't determine. And is there always ways to improve how we operate and how we function? Absolutely. And maybe functioning a little bit differently. And so I really can't give you a definite answer, but it's, even your question had an assumption in it. So it's difficult to answer, you know, what would come back and what wouldn't. We haven't gotten into those details yet.
And when you look at how the state funds us, I mean, we have, they give us a two-year budget when we have a new biennium. And then the second year, we have one year, but I still have to do a five-year forecast. So I have four years of unknown.
Right.
And then you throw in when we get a new governor and they decide they want to completely overhaul school funding and go back to square one, you know, it's very difficult. So if we get to a place where the state begins to fund us properly, absolutely, I mean, I can see that we're able to, you know, sustain this for much farther than five years and we're able to, you know, reinstitute certain things. But our goal is to get five years at least, because, you know, we just can't pass a levy and say, oh, sorry, community, we thought we were going to get five years, but we got three.
Right.
And so, you know, we lose all credibility at that point as well, and we're not properly managing the resources that we've been given the responsibility to manage. So, you know, we're trying to make sure that we get at least five years, and we believe that we're inside of that, that we can get there.
And also on what's, what's the feel of what's acceptable to our community, what they'll support. And, you know, it'd be great to ask for 13 mils, you know, and then we can expand programming and introduce them to new programs and those kind of things, but we know pretty clearly that our community would not support that.
As long as our community understands that we can't keep giving the same product with less and less and less.
Right.
And I think that's kind of almost what the want is from them. Like, while you're giving them a great education, we're doing great, let's just, that's just how it's perceived, especially in the teachers right now, that, hey, we've done great with less, let's just keep doing great with less. I feel like there's going to become a point where we can't continue to do that, especially with these cuts and maybe never getting back to where we're going up instead of just like this or even like that.
Absolutely. Every reduction has a reaction or a consequence. I mean, that's, you guys that are science teachers know that. Every decision has a reaction and has a consequence, pros and cons. And you're right, it's absolutely true.
Just one more comment. You mentioned that in staffing, we can save your attrition, which means we have one less English teacher, which means everyone else's classes are going to increase. So I don't know if the public understands, that's great, we didn't hire a replacement, but what that has done is increased class sizes. I know you understand that and we understand that, but I don't think the public understands.
Well, that's what we need to make sure to communicate, is what does a reduction in staff mean? It means we carry on with as much programming, we either cut programming or increase class size, right?
And, yeah, we're not laying anyone off, no one lost their job, but our class size is still.
The workload just got, yeah, increased for who's left. Absolutely true.
You mentioned that 14% of the voters made no choice at all. We are also dealing with voter apathy because we didn't have a tremendous turnout of voters. So you need to get out there as well and make sure all the voters get out there and vote.
Agreed. Mr. Vol. We're going to need to wrap up in about 30 seconds.
Just very quickly, I think, you know, you alluded to, the committee that met recognized that the district had a financial operating crisis. This proposal really was simply an acknowledgement that we needed to make sure we had a financing mechanism in place so we could turn the lights on. There were going to be some tough decisions made in that context, but I think the fact of the matter is, I think virtually everybody agreed that we need to come back, not when this levy expires, but in the interim, and really get our arms around how we finance this operation in that sort of, in that most bizarre way that the community can accept. And I think that's part, and I think Jeff's touched on it, but there is a willingness for people to get back and really try and rethink how we do this to get us to the result that we want. So it's not a one and done.
Could I say one thing? We absolutely cannot survive another organized no campaign. I think you all realize that sitting here. So whatever it takes, you know, we haven't been lying, we haven't been sneaky, we haven't been hiding anything. We cannot survive another no campaign. And a lot of you have lived here as long as I have, which is forever, and we've never seen it before. And it caused a lot of issues. So the million dollar question is, how do we get people to care enough to listen to the facts? We had more people attend our community sessions than we ever have when we had levy campaigns. So we were very positive about that when we were at schools and when we were at football games passing things out, people seemed very positive. So we were, we weren't totally prepared for what happened. But it's a waste of money to run levy campaigns, and it's, land dating our schools is a waste of money. So whatever we can do as a community, we need to do, we all need to get on board and continue to make North Canton a special place to live and learn.
Thank you. Thank you again to the committee and for everybody being here and having an interest in our district. We're going to take about a minute and a half break and start our board meeting that's late. Thank you very much, folks, appreciate you.